Good morning, Department of Crawford County Board of Commissioners, Dean for April 25th, 2024. We'll start with the Pledge of Independence, Commissioner Shaw.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great quality of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, whose liberty and justice are our.
Okay, approval of minutes for the full session on April 10th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved to second, any discussion? Rule call.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Approval of minutes for the work session on April 17th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Properly moved to second, any discussion? Rule call.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes. Had approval of bills of $2,703,630.69 for the period ending April 24th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
But properly moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Third of all, executive session, any public comment? Okay, we'll start with Women's Services.
Hello, Bruce.
Morning, Bruce.
Good morning, gentlemen, always a pleasure. So I'm here today because of the county Women's Services and Meadville City Police Department collaborated on a grant application that's made possible through the Violence Against Women Act. These are federal funds that support a coordinating team approach to the crimes of domestic violence, sexual violence, stalking and dating violence. We've been getting this grant here in Crawford County since the mid to late 90s. It's $375,000 over three years. That's $125,000 a year. Thirty-seven-five goes to support an assistant district attorney here in the courthouse. Thirty-seven-five goes to a detective through the Meadville City Police Department and 50,000 Women's Services for a full-time legal advocate who's embedded here in the courthouse and a part-time legal advocate in Titusville. So I'll be dropping off the signature page for you to sign off on. Also, we have a couple of pass-through agreements that have to be signed off on because the money comes into you and then you distribute it out to the city and to Women's Services. We're still working on the final pieces of the grant. I have a couple of things to do yet. Stephanie Franz does have a couple of things to do and then we'll get it to you. I'll drop it off to Commissioner Box. But I'll get this to you today so you can start circulating for the sake.
Okay, I would move to approve.
Second.
It probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
CADA. Tim and his clan, Anna's special guests.
Welcome, everybody.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today is National Take Your Kids to Work Day. So I'm honored to be here with my four children, Ethan, Adeline, Luke and Jacob. They're going to learn a lot about CADA today and they were excited to come to the Commissioner meeting and hopefully be on TV. Well, welcome.
Way to the camera.
This might be our highest viewed meeting yet.
Yes.
So I'm here on official CADA business. I'm here asking for your support in the amount of $50,000, which will support the CADA Fixed Route Grant of just over $2 million with Penn Doc. The request of $50,000, $42,000, $15,000 will go to match the state funds. $7,985 will go into the reserve for future operating and capital expenses. We are presenting a similar resolution for Benango County to match their portion of our required local share. And this request of $50,000 is a zero increase request over the past five to seven years. So it's been a flat request and we appreciate your support. If there's any questions about CADA or our operating grant, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Would any of the kids want to answer the question?
Questions about CADA?
No, no.
Go into the garage and see.
Oh, good. Good. Yeah, I will make that motion.
I will second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion?
Just that this, and this money is managed incredibly. The reserve, how they, they structure their reserves and how they do matches is truly an oddo for, for organizations such as this. Was there great, like there's that sort of attentiveness put into it.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Rule call.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, kids.
See you later, have fun.
Correctional facility.
You got to follow that. When you can probably bring some orange shirts.
This morning, looking to get two items ratified. First item is payment of $9,384.75 to the overhead door company of Franklin. This is for a broken spring in our Sallyport door and it has gone budgeted item.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Second item is payment of $525 through Seven Mountains Media to attend a job fair and also have 30 recruitment commercials to assist in finding candidates to fill several vacant positions at the facility. And this is also not a budgeted item.
I'll make that move.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion?
And that's this Saturday.
This Saturday, correct.
Where's that at?
Voodoo Brewery.
Down.
Right, it's called Beers and Careers. Yeah, and it's actually one of the better job fairs that we've gone to. Vaughn Wilson's great. He directs people to us and he, he does a really good job.
Very good.
That's probably incentive to stop now, listening.
Where else can you get a job for beers and careers?
Any other discussion? Rule call.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Probation.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Robert.
First item on the agenda here is modification of our current drug and alcohol RIP intermediate punishment grant. We modified to reduce the grant by $55,000. Obviously, we didn't budget this, we didn't plan on this, but it's not affecting the county. This is dollars that will come from drug and alcohol and treatment from their, their end of things, but it won't affect anything as it relates to personnel and budgeted items here for the county.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
And the next item is the approval of the same application for the 2024-2025 fiscal grant of the drug and alcohol RIP intermediate punishment grant in the amount of $270,000. So we're applying for this same grant to start July 1st.
I'll make that move.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
IT and Dean will do that on behalf of Tim.
IT is requesting purchase of Oracle Support Concept Plus LLC per walk at 25 hours in the amount of $4,125 to be invoiced only when hours are used. This is for a period ending 12/31/27 and it is a budgeted item.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
And lastly, they're requesting to ratify the new three-year contact contract with Nationwide Power for service of the UPS at the Judicial Center in the amount of $8,273.97. This is a budgeted item.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public safety. One day.
Good morning, Mr. President. Well, we're asking to approve the purchase of three Dell desktop computers through IT in the amount of $3,357.34 to replace the current amateur radio computers that have a safety bill or has enough funds to be used for that purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion?
Is that group still fairly active? But it seems to me they were losing some members to that.
They're okay.
Okay.
There's, there's a band of few fellows.
Yeah.
Still run.
Rule call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Requesting to approve the payment of $16,400 to MCM Consulting for continued work on the county's housing mitigation plan. That will all be reimbursed through KMS.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion?
What is the, I should know this and he said before, what is the timeline? What do we expect it to be?
The checks in the mail.
Checks to. Yes, I couldn't remember. I thought it was the five years and.
Yeah, there is a chance to be a.
See you reimbursed with Cummings.
Rule call.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
We're asking you to approve the fiscal year 24-25 Hazmat Response Fund Grant from KMA in the amount of $13,673. KMA will be using that money to complete the purchase of hazmat testing stands, cylinder holders and absorbent materials and no matching funds are required.
So moved.
Second.
So probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, just to approve the purchase of two replacement resource tables in the 911 Center from Zibic Systems, the amount of $4,572.18 will be using our wireless funds to cover that expense.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion?
Did those arrive?
No, I didn't. One word, Julia.
Okay.
Rule call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Thank you, Greg.
All right, thank you.
The courts.
Good morning.
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 I think we'd actually like to table the first item on each agenda.
Well, thirteen eight?
Yeah.
Fifteen.
So the first item we have is to ratify the purchase of two Dell octopus micro computers for a total cost of $1,571.82 for video conferencing system upgrade for the MBJ lines of courtroom from warranty funds.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Next item we have is to ratify the purchase of a Logitech non-USB microphone, two OES BMT webcams, two HDMI cables and two USB 10-foot extenders from Amazon for a video conferencing system upgrade for the MBJ Minesville courtroom from warranty funds totaling $422.43.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
The next item is to ratify purchase of two 3-inch TVs and mounts for Walmart for video conferencing system upgrade for the MBJ line to a courtroom from warranty funds totaling $335.96.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Next item is we're requesting approval for the purchase of materials from Aides Contractor Center totaling $831.91 for the installed bullet panels at the MBJ Birmingham office paid for by the AOPC Security Pay in an amount of $633.17 in warranty split funds in the amount of $198.74.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
The last item we have is requesting approval for the purchase of materials from Sherman Williams totaling $512.51 for the installed bullet panels at the MBJ Birmingham office paid for by warranty.
Like funding this.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Crawford County Planning.
Good morning, Ann. Oh, we have lots of questions for you, Ann.
Oh, you bet. All right, first couple we have corrections. Ratified approval to pay the below invoices for reimbursement in the corrected amount of $1,120 to vote heating and cooling for training wages through the construction workforce industry program for the following students. C currents for $600 and M Rossi for $520. This is a non-budgeted item. This item is to be paid for out of the whole global care program.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Next correction is ratifying approval to pay the below invoices for reimbursement in the corrected amount of $2,376 to R.A. Johnson for training wages through the credit construction workforce industry program for the following students. D Gubei for $640 and Beck for $520 and Rebaker for $576 and R Atkins for $640. This is a non-budgeted item. This item is paid for out of the whole global care program.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Next is request approval to pay the below invoices for reimbursement in the amount of $1,216 to vote heating and cooling for training wages through the construction workforce industry program for the following students. C currents for $576 and M Rossi for $640. This is a non-budgeted item. This item is to be paid for out of the whole global care program.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Request approval to pay invoice number three for reimbursement in the amount of $576 to Ferguson Construction for I Nicole A. Training wages through construction workforce industry program. This is a non-budgeted item. This item is to be paid for out of the whole global care program.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion?
It's just good to see the repetition of names. Not just today, through the various spots. That means these teams are sticking with it and it's effective.
Yeah.
It's going well.
Good.
Rule call.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Request approval to pay invoice 14718 from Porter Consulting Engineers in the amount of $4,177.95 for engineering work completed, completed for the Heineken Park. This is a non-budgeted item. This item is paid for out of the county CB BG, CB3 grades.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Crawford County Maintenance.
Good morning, Mark.
Good morning, Mark.
Morning.
Ask to ratify approval of invoices for the new second floor finance office for $9,243.38.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion?
Looks good up there.
Rule call.
Thank you very much. Shaw? Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Ask to ratify approval of invoices for the courthouse brick wall project for $3,879.33.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Ask approval to pay Ann Mark compartmental to remove asbestos pipe insulation in the courthouse for $3,195.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ask approval to pay the Meadville Tribune for advertisement of bids for the courthouse parking deck rehab project for $941.50.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Ask approval to pay invoice to Brian Noah, project manager, for professional services for the month of March 2024 for $2,083.50.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Ask approval for a change order to ramp construction to install a new vent curb on the Ushoe Arena. Link project at the fairgrounds for $1,200.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
And ask approval to pay SAG contractors sales for repair of some of the four tractor at the fairgrounds for $1,58.63.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Thank you. Human Services.
Morning.
Morning. Steve.
I am seeking ratification of the contract with Den Sar Incorporated. The contract period is for January 1st, 2024 to September 31st, 2024. This agreement covers preventative maintenance and on-call remedial maintenance service for all of the doors security and put in the out and solve from them.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Seeking approval of the purchase requisition to Dell Incorporated for the purchase of 22 Dell laptops and eight Active Pens. The cost is $25,010.34. The cost of the county is $4,481.91.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeking approval of the purchase requisition to Meadville Community Soup Kitchen for $5,000 to be used for food grocery purchases. This was part of the retained revenue plan for fiscal year 22-23. The cost of the county is $266.95.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
We seek approval of the purchase requisition to Zook Motors for purchase of a 2024 Ford Escape. The total is $29,684.22. There is no cost of county. This is all paid for through IDR funds.
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
I'm seeking approval of the F2 Amendment to the fiscal year 23-24 CYSJP contract with family services in Northwest Pennsylvania. This amendment is combining the maximums for three services and adding an additional $6,000. Individual rates for each service remain unchanged.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Seeley?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
We seek approval of the C1 Amendment to the fiscal year 23-24 NH IDBI contract with child of family connections. This is part of the fiscal year 22-23 income and services block grant retained revenue plan. The provider has been approved to purchase three cameras for the transitional living program on part of the belt.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Seeking approval of the C2 Amendment to fiscal year 23-24 Contract with Crawford County Mental Health Awareness Program. It's part of the Human Services Block Grant Retained Revenue Plan. The provider has been approved to purchase furniture for the drop-in center and supplies for the satisfied nurse program.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion? Rule call.
Henry?
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Shell.
Yes.
Seek approval of the C-one amendment to the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four contract with hand and hand medical services. This amendment is combining the maximum earnings disposal for the prospecting elementary house. There is no overall change in funding. It's also increasing the maximum earnings for the Shallow Center by ten thousand dollars.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Seeley.
Yes.
Shell.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
We seeking approval of the C-three amendment to the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four contract with hand and hand medical services as part of the human services block grant retained revenue plan. The provider has been approved to utilize funds to replace several bars.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Shell.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Seeking approval of the C-one amendment to the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four contract with Tidesville Areas Senior Citizens Corporation as part of the human services block grant retained revenue plan. The provider has been approved to purchase two rolly kitchen trolley cabinets for the social connections drop-in center.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Shell.
Yes.
Seeking approval in the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four professional contracts with the whole family YMCA. As part of the human services block grant retained revenue plan, the provider has been approved to utilize funds for their three dinner and food bag distribution.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Seeley.
Yes.
Shell.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Seeking approval of the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four professional contract with St. James Haven. As part of the human services block grant retained revenue plan, the provider has been approved to utilize funds to complete a kitchen remodel for the shelter.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Shell.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Seeking approval of the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four professional contract with Women's Services as part of the human services block grant retained revenue plan. The provider has been approved to purchase a variety of household and housing items for their shelter.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Shell.
Yes.
And I'm seeking approval as the year twenty-three, twenty-four professional contract with the YWCA of Tidesville as part of the human service block grant retained revenue plan. The provider has been approved to purchase supplies for the St. James House shelter.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Seeley.
Yes.
Shell.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name.
Good morning.
Good morning, Stephanie.
Please approve all of the following invoices. The first is to Penn State Extension. It's the second quarter twenty twenty-four budget appropriation in the amount of seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars. Next, we have an invoice to Pennzoil Resource Conservation Council. It's the installment two of the three-year program in the amount of five thousand dollars. And finally, to the City of Tidesville, it's their AMS generator contribution in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second in any discussion. The other half of that generator was actually purchased by, excuse me, Taisville Hospital. So, it's nice collaboration to cover Taisville. Roll call.
Shell.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Taxpayer. Training.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Asking for rat, you ratify payments to government software services for the manly of four thousand fourteen notes of claim mailers for the twenty-twenty-three taxes in the amount of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and three dollars and sixty cents. This is a budgeted item and will be charged back to the tax, tax payers, the Lincoln Tax Department.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Shell.
Yes.
Asking for approval, payment to government software services for trainings and four thousand fourteen notes of claim mailers for the twenty-three taxes in the amount of three thousand fifty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. This is a budgeted item and will be added into tax payers to Lincoln Tax Department.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Seeley.
Yes.
Shell.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners.
Requesting approval, contract with Echo Valley for a federal contest at the twenty twenty-four Calipare in the amount of two thousand dollars. The fair board is responsible for the prize.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Are you considering getting in this?
My yes vote is contingent on Commissioner Henry.
There you go.
Roll call.
Shell.
He does.
Henry.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
And last, requesting approval of the payment of invoice to Leonard's Auto for appears to the Chevy Suburban in the amount of seven hundred and one dollars and thirty-five cents.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Shell.
Yes.
Okay, there are new hires and transfers in your packet. Take a look at those, please.
Motion to a base. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Seeley.
Yes.
Shell.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Okay. Following information. Coming meetings, next work session may Thursday, full session may eighth. Commissioner Columbus, Commissioner Seeley.
Sure. I would just take a moment to, to recognize and to comment on the, the primary election they had this week. It went very smoothly. Both voters, election workers, and poll workers were pleased with how nicely it went. And that's, that is done through the, the work of our elections office and the work of our poll workers across Crawford. And they, for many years, I, I was on the other side of that as a candidate and as a party official and was able to watch the election process very effectively. And I, I had a lot to learn on Tuesday, I would say. And I cannot, absolutely cannot say enough about the election staff and the many employees of Crawford County that pitch in in ways that I never would have known prior to last night. And it's, it's truly a feather in our cap. It's something we can all take a great amount of pride in as Crawford County residents that we have this caliber of people working for us both here in this building and all across the polling precincts of Crawford County. So, our tip of the hat to you and we're very pleased to have you on our fold.
Mr. Shell.
I, I will just echo that. It's, it's an amazing process in this county to, to watch how this election system goes. And the, the credit starts with the people out in the field and there are dozens of them. And we met with all of them yesterday. And it comes back to, to Gina and, and the group in the voter service office and did a fantastic job. It was a real learning experience for me, but I can't thank you guys enough for, for everything that you, that you did. And even Keith Gusher was nice to us when he stopped by. So, thank you.
Somebody wrote in, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, you got a couple of the other.
He's a nice for some.
How that is. I don't have to repeat what everybody else said, but I just, I, I always, when I visit the polling precincts, I visit about thirty of them. One of these guys really did a lot of the late work, the mail and that's much appreciated. It's how it worked and probably in the fall, that may have to be expanded so they can continue to do the good work to get it done. That process was good, but whenever you, whenever you receive unsolicited compliments about your staff, it's nice to hear. So, and, and I really didn't. I just talked about the training that Gina does. She has it down pat. They detail, Desaline has a paperwork, which is crazy. I mean, if you need anything, and what they, what they are most happy about is that they're willing to change and adjust on the fly. So, every year, the training is different and that's what they like to go for. The attendance was great for the training. So, it's just good to see and good to hear. And, you know, I know there's people out there that have concerns about elections that doesn't even want to listen to you. Please, please email, as I have one in my box today. Please email, please ask us all the questions in the world. But the end of the day, I think this border, this border elections can tell you that our, our elections are safe, secure, and by all means, it's a compliment to everything we have here in the group. So, including back over there in the corn because.
Yeah.
The machines did really well and I am very happy with how they, they progressed through the day. There was very little issues. Now, the water drain was low, so that, I mean, it helped a little bit for all of us, but it's a good run for the fall. I think so. Do you want to add anything at all, since you kind of take the.
Um, really just sort of the same, along the same lines as what you guys said. I'm just really honored and proud to be a part of the team that we have here in Crawford County. The robe of, the staff in voter services, the board, who's always supportive and assisting in any way that they can. And it's just really a source of pride to be considered a part of that team.
Well, thank you.
And, and the food was good that everybody brought.
Crawled out of here and left.
Yes.
Okay, no other business for the ward, other hitting motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, adjourned. Thank you.